I'd like to call the Council and Council meetings in order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some changes to the agenda on the bench today. There was, tonight there was amended agreement for the sidewalk, the use of public right-of-way, I know, 1261. Everybody should have that, an amended agreement. That would be what we were referring to. So also as part of the change in the motion, we will be on the fifth line down after Michigan Avenue is shown on diagram 1.4 revised April 16th, 2012. Subject to approval issuance of a permit by M.D.O.T. for the tables on West Michigan Avenue and then delete to authorize or not authorize the tape line. That's included in the revised agreement, but we'll have a chance to go over that when that comes up. We also have some changes, additions to under discussion. Our city manager would like to give us an update on the police chief search and also we are, some folks are going to go to Lansing to their starting Senate hearings on that personal property tax change. So those two items will be added to the agenda. Is there anything else that anybody would like to add or change on the agenda? We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moreau.
Second.
Rhodes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Well, we have some celebrations and recognitions tonight, so there's quite a few people in the audience, which is great because we have a lot of exciting things that are going on in Celine. Some bittersweet, and I think we're start off with the first one, which would be the recognition of our deputy clerk who's retiring after 27 years. Jackie, you want to come up, please?
Everybody's gonna cry.
We're all gonna cry.
Yes, you tested it. Okay. So for those of you that don't know, this is Deputy Clerk Jackie Lindemore, and we're really glad that she came tonight because she's sort of bashful. But she has been a fabulous deputy clerk, and I don't know what we're going to do without you. And this is going to be a really hard, it's been really hard just to even think about the fact that you're leaving us, and we're really going to miss you. Jackie's one of those, actually, the Clerk's Department General is one of those departments that are behind the scenes, but the city wouldn't run without these two. And I don't, I really, I'm sort of at a loss for how to even talk about all the things that you do because you're so thorough and so efficient, and she does everything, you know, without being asked. She volunteers for everything and takes a lot of initiative on your own, and I don't know what we're going to do without you, to be honest with you. So I just wanted to say thank you for all your years of service. I know you're going to be very much missed. I know Diane, it's really, we've been talking behind your back a little bit about how much we're going to miss you, and so we'd like to say in front of everybody here, I hope you all will remember Jackie, and I'm sure you'll see her in the grocery store and remember that she's really made Celine the very special community is in a very quiet way, and those are our unsung heroes, so I'd just like to say thank you again. We have this beautiful watch for a retirement gift, and anyhow, I know Diane wanted to say a few things.
I don't know if I can. I don't know if I can. Jackie and I have been together 27 years. I don't know if I can do this. I'm going to miss her tremendously. She's been a great asset to my department. We work well together. Our first election was the pits in 88. We started at 6:00 a.m. on Election Day, and we walked out of the county the next day at 6:00 a.m. We were the last one in. There was no food to be had in the middle of the night. Everybody wanted us to come to their celebration parties, and we couldn't because we were waiting for our count board. But we were at work at 8:30 a.m. after an hour of sleep. But we've done nothing but improve since then, and Jackie has been very instrumental in that. She's been my elections go-to person. We've done a tremendous job, and I'm going to miss her immensely.
I just want to thank the current city council mayor and past city council members for allowing me to serve for the community.
Let's just go out and cry.
Okay. But I'd also like to thank my family, you know, long days and that, and there were times, a lot of nights, because I had planning commission, and I never missed an event that I know of that I really had to be at for you girls, but you understood, and your support means a lot. Steve, thank you. Love you.
Hello, everyone. March 14th, Michigan Recreation and Parks Association held their community service awards in East Lansing, and Celine nominated two people. Our first one is not here, but Kevin Taylor was nominated for the Youth Sports Staff Member of the Year. And Kevin was nominated because of his work with our youth sports program and with our Pee-wee soccer clinics and our Pee-wee sports classes and our homeschool gym class and our superheroes and training boot camp. It's funny because Kevin is this 6'7" big guy, and he works with the little tiny fellas and girls, and he does a great job, and we felt like he was deserving of this award. And he was given this honor, and he was given the award up in Lansing. We wanted him to be here tonight. Unfortunately, he is coaching one of four of his soccer, other soccer teams that he coaches, and he's also the Pioneer High School varsity coach. So unfortunately, he's not here, but we wanted to recognize him tonight. Our second award is here. Diane Mukla was given a community service award for her support with De Croft Montessori School for all of the programs that they sponsor for Celine Parks and Recreation. Diane, the first approach that we had with her was to sponsor one of our movie In the Park nights, and she said, yes, of course, and also, what else can I do? So she brought her whole staff to the movie and did crafts with the kids and interactive programs and things like that, and just really made that whole night a super great experience. And I think that started in 2007, so she's been a consistent sponsor every year, as well as sponsoring our T-ball programs and our Mighty Mighty, or our soccer programs and signs on our softball fields and whatnot. So we really appreciate Diane's support and her giving back to the community. The one funny thing is, De Croft isn't even located in Celine. It's an Ann Arbor school. However, Diane is from Celine, and she felt the need to really give back to this community. And, you know, we congratulate, congratulate her for that. And we have her award, and I'd like her to come up, and Mary Driscoll, if you would, just for a photo opportunity. And I'm not sure, would you like to say something?
I also wanted to add, not only the recreation award, but Diane's very thoughtful in our community as a whole, as a person in general, because she has been really involved in kicking off our leadership, the retreats that you do every year, which is, for those of you that haven't participated in the Celine Leadership Program, it's a really great leadership development and citizen development program that, it's very important that it gets started. It's a year-long program, it's very important that it gets started on the right foot, and Diane does that by kicking off the retreat. And then you've also done some strategic planning with the city council and staff in the past, and I just would like to also recognize all the work that you've done, not only supporting our recreation programs, but in our community as a whole, that you've really done a tremendous amount on your own volunteer time, and we really appreciate all that, so thank you very much.
Well, I was honored when they called and said that they were going to give me an award. When we came here 10 years ago, and I started getting involved, I always said, there's something special going on in Celine. And every time I'm with a new group, whether it was the Historical Society, or the Friends of the Library, or the new group in the Celine Leadership Institute, you always get that feeling. It's like there's something special going on in Celine, so it's been real easy to want to give back. It's been great for our school, as they, the staff loves it, a lot of our children have come out and done things, so it's been a good opportunity for them. And I would just also like to acknowledge my family, because my husband, whenever I get involved in extracurricular activities, he's, he's always involved too. So he's always loading and unloading things and running to the store and helping with setup. My son Matthew probably set up pretty much every event that I've had to do, and he comes and along with my son Daniel, and Daniel and other members of our jump rope team at Celine, he's now graduated, would come for the fun fitness days and teach the children, you know, some neat jump rope tricks. So they, they would spend hours there every year. So I really appreciate my family backing, they're backing me as well, so thank you. It's fun to be a part of the community.
It gives me great privilege, privilege tonight to talk about the Youth of the Year Award that we have from Celine. We have three nominees tonight that are showing outstanding contributions to our community. And what the Youth of the Award, Youth of the Year Award involves is basically individuals that have been volunteering and have shown efforts that are including such things as initiating change within the betterment of Celine and also participating in extracurricular activities during the last year. And this year, we had three nominees, which we were welcome to have that, and the three individuals are Haley Burns, Julia Hoagiekin, and Moro McCann. Moro McCann actually won the award this past Friday and was presented it at the Celine Salutes that's held by Celine Chamber, Area Chamber Commerce. But unfortunately Haley's not able to attend tonight, but Julia is, and we'd like to recognize her, and if she would come forward, please. I'd like to give a little background on Julia. Julia is a senior at Celine High School. She was nominated by Cindy Sabuko, Kristen Glatz, and Kelly Barbrett, most notably for her role in Route 12 to Main Street campaign to advertising the Celine High School and creating a portion of the Celine's presentation to the MHSDA about Celine schools and youth. In addition, she's a member of the National Honor Society, is a national merit finalist, student council president on cross-country team, is in the marching band, volunteers at Celine Evangelical Home, raised money and collected cancer to Celine Social Services, and is a private tutor. This girl is doing a lot for the community, and we really appreciate it, so congratulations for being nominated.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Mary Laronis, and the River Raisin Watershed is going to do a presentation.
A while back, when the dues for the watershed was taken off the agenda for that night's council meeting, I promised I would bring somebody from the watershed council who could update us on what's going on with the council. So I have Sybil Colen, and she's the one, one of the few people that has been actively involved all the time. So we'll let her take over and give us a brief update on what's happening with the watershed.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak. I want to thank you for your long-term support of the watershed council, and you, you may or may not be aware of some of the struggles that we've been going through. I think that was maybe one of the concerns that was raised. Our membership is down. I mean, we have mostly relied on local municipalities like yourself, and in looking at our list of, I think there's a total of 63 municipalities that are eligible to, to belong to the watershed council strictly voluntarily, and we've had many more members in the past, but we currently have 21 of those 63 who have paid their dues for this year, and, you know, which gives us enough money in the budget to continue. Although we no longer have paid staff at this point in time, we did have an executive director, but weren't able to continue that. And as I'm sure you're aware, you know, many local governments are struggling, and this is a kind of an easy thing to cross off the list. But we are getting ready for our annual meeting on May 10th at the Tecumseh District Library at 6:00 o'clock, and we've sent out letters to our members, and we're going to be inviting, you know, others as well to come and basically try to, I guess we're kind of almost starting over. I mean, we really, we have a lot ahead of us, we've done some things, we've, we've got, we got some assistance from the River Network, which is a national organization that helps out watershed councils. We got a little bit of funding from them. We made another application, which did not get funded at this point. When I first became more involved a couple of years ago, I raised some concerns about the bylaws that were put together a few years ago that were intended to get more people involved, and we're still in process of working that out. But I actually got, you may be familiar with the News Center in Ann Arbor that helps nonprofits. They guided us to an organization that provides legal services, so I actually have a meeting set up for later this week to meet with an attorney who's going to help us make sure that we've got our bylaws and everything together. And we currently still have our office, but I think, you know, we might be closing that down. I mean, we are basically asking all of our members to come to our May 10th meeting and, you know, send their delegates and participate and help us decide how we're going to move forward. And, you know, you've been a long-term supporter of the council, and I would really hope that you would stick with us at this time and, and help us figure out, because it's your municipalities that are really going to help us achieve what we need to. And the one, the most important thing that we've done recently is we got the River Raisin Watershed Management Plan approved by the DEQ. That basically made our group, as well as other nonprofits and local governments eligible for funding with, through the 319 Clean Water Act, which is EPA funds that's, you know, funneled through the DEQ. There have been three grants awarded because of that, which are already starting to take steps to improve water quality. The river is critical, the land that all drains into the river, it's, you know, it's our quality of life, and I really sincerely believe that, that there is interest, there's a lot, I'm sure you've heard about the Aljol Blooms in Lake Erie that is a result of the runoff from a lot of farm fields and whatnot, and there's, there's money becoming available, there's a lot of interest in dealing with that situation, and the watershed council is the kind of group that can do that. And so I'd ask for your support, and I'd be glad to answer questions, but I know you have a busy agenda, so.
There might be a few questions, because we, the due statement did come up, and, or does any council members have any questions? No? If not, okay, well, we really appreciate your coming.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary.
And I wanted to let the council know that I intend to continue to be your delegate to the watershed. I will attend the May 10th meeting, I will report back. Celine has a long, long record of being one of the first municipalities to pay their dues, and as soon as we know that things are under control, I'll be back to let you know that I think it's important that we do that again. I have a little pamphlet that I hope, this is put out by American Rivers, but it tells what we need to do to keep our rivers safe, and water is so important.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Mitch Road on oil and gas drilling.
Load the lights for the romantic effect here. Well, here we go. Thanks, Microsoft. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here this evening. I wish it were under better circumstances. My name is Mitch Road, and normally you're used to seeing me as the representative of Quantum Signal here as over in Union School, and we're here to talk about growing jobs and, and growing business here in Celine and more investment in these sort of positive, happy things. Tonight, unfortunately, I have the opportunity or the obligation to talk to you about what is going on in terms of oil and gas drilling and mineral rights leasing here in the Washtenaw County area. I represent both myself, as well as a fairly substantial and growing group of citizens known as nopaxton.com, who's been meeting over at the Union School since about November. And so without further ado, I'd like to start out by, and I apologize for not distributing copies here, but I'll certainly get you copies later. I'd like to start out by showing you a picture in the upper left of a local pump site that was taken, that image was taken in, I think, November, December timeframe by one of our members, about one of the local wells there, and you can kind of barely see, but you can see the natural gas being flared off there because it's not profitable to, to collect there, as well as the mess kind of made. You know, that's just one little pump and one little well. On the lower right, I show what is considered to be a frack, well, is a fracking site in New York area, and, and I think that we need to be careful and look at where we're going and what may happen should we not take this very seriously. So just for some background, since the '60s, oil and gas leasing has been going on around here. Lots of folks have signed mineral rights leases, hoping to find minerals to extract and make some money, this sort of thing. Most of it was fairly unproductive. In fact, a couple of them made kind of a mess. If you talk to some of the old timers that were around here, that were around that area, they've seen some messes in Lowdy Township, I believe. But since then, the technologies have evolved. Localization of the resources, finding the gas itself, or the oil, I should say, finding the oil itself, as well as the gas, as well as the extraction methods have evolved, and thus smaller and smaller plays are possible at a reasonable cost. And as the price of oil goes up, certainly it becomes more and more interesting to these companies. A small company from Gaylord named Paxton Resources has been leasing from folks in the past couple of years, bought a lot of inactive leases from a company that kind of went away, and they've been trying to sign up a lot of folks. There's a lot of folks that are concerned here, and I want to talk a little bit about that. This impacts the city of Celine in a way that you can't possibly imagine, or maybe I couldn't possibly imagine before I started to do the research. Before I go too far forward, I just want to put up some of the positives and negatives as we see it. First being the positives, the only positive we could come up with is it's free money for those that are getting it from the, the oil well. We could see no other real positive from it. The negatives that we saw were substantial, and these are the negatives that aren't mentioned to the folks that are, that are signing up to the leases. Things like contamination of drinking wells. And folks, there are a lot of drinking wells for folks like me and the others that live around the city of Celine, outside the city of Celine. I live at Celine Water Works in Grass roughly, and we depend on a drinking water well. I'll talk about that in a minute. Contamination of the air, hydrogen sulfide gas, the noise, the nuisance, the impact on the roads, the accidents that can come from it and the spills. These are being felt in different places and right here in Michigan. We just haven't seen it that much here, yet, yet. There are potentially adverse financial impacts as well, destruction of property values, invalidation of mortgages. When you sign these leases, a lot of cases, it can invalidate your mortgage and it can be called, and I could talk a little bit more about that. Costly lawsuits, you know, what do you think happens when there's a spill, and who's going to clean it up? Probably the worst and most painful part of this for me personally is that the state law is set up such that we can be compelled, forced, to give up our mineral rights to a company, whether we like it or not. And that is the nature of the law, and I could certainly tell you more about that. I would say that before I move on, one of the defenses here that you've seen from, or you'll see from, from oil and gas companies is that we're not fracking. There's no fracking going on here in Washtenaw County. And not only do I, do I question their definition of fracking, but I would also say that regardless of whether you call it fracking or not fracking, there are very serious risks. So what I'm going to show you next applies to both fracking and non-fracking. Fracking can be the worst of the two. In both fracking and non-fracking circumstances, oil drilling is accomplished nowadays by mixing water with chemicals and injecting it into the ground as part of the process. These chemicals can include hydrochloric and nitric acid, which, which are fairly common in acidization wells, as well as things like benzene, acetone, diesel fuel, and much more. In fact, Michigan has a law that requires the drillers to disclose what chemicals they're using, because in other parts of the country, a lot of cases, they don't even disclose what chemicals they're using. Unfortunately, these contaminated, the injected contaminated water doesn't necessarily stay contained, it can migrate not only from where they've reinjected it, but also in these pits that they set up next to the pumps when they're, when they're drilling them, next to the wells. I could talk a lot about that. Already here in Washtenaw County, and in fact in this local area, tens of thousands of gallons of nitric and hydrochloric acid have been injected into the ground in the interest of pumping an oil, creating an oil well. And we don't know what else, we don't know what else is next. One of the things that a lot of people don't know, and when they sign up to mineral rights leases, is that any drill, well can pretty much be turned into a disposal well. So you drill a well, and you don't find oil, the company can turn around, check a box on a form for the DEQ, DEQ stamps it and says, it's fine, you can turn that into a disposal well. The landowner has no say, the municipality has no say, Washtenaw County currently has no say over that. Ask the Norville Township Supervisor in the Irish Hills area, they've got a couple of deep injection wells coming their way prior to an EPA hearing. Folks found out about that through, through kind of an accidental way, and, and that's, that's more than a little bit disturbing to me. The companies are required, when they do these oil wells, to have bonds for cleanups and spills. The requirement, to my knowledge, is $250,000. Now, how, you know, you guys know what budgets look like, how much do you think $250,000 is going to cover if an oil tanker tips over, or if there's a spill or contamination of wells? It's not going to cover anything. I don't want to get into this too much, but you know, it's more than just contamination of wells. On Christmas Eve morning, December 24th of last year, up in, in Potoski, in Crawford County, a hydrogen sulfide gas leak went down, about 135,000 cubic feet came out of one of the production well facilities, and just kind of flooded the area. DEQ found out afterwards, a lot of bad things could have happened. You know, and you can look at the bottom of my slide, and I'll provide it to you, this not only is annoying, it's that, that kind of sulfur-y rotten egg smell that you'll smell off some of these wells, it can kill in high enough concentrations. And so if you drive down, I'll say, near some of the wells locally, sniff. That's hydrogen sulfide, folks. It's like, I guarantee it. And, and that's not a good smell. To some, it may smell like money, to others, it smells like contamination. Now, these leases that are being, that are being kind of signed around here are very one-way. You have what are called landmen using fairly questionable approaches. Certainly in my line of business, it would be called misrepresentation or lying, but, but they certainly put high pressure on local landowners to sign one-way indefinite lease terms, pretty much do anything on the property. I put up some, an example of the lease, and I don't expect you to read it there, but think about, each of these leases contains things like disposition of water brine or other fluids, and enhanced recovery operations. What do you think these enhanced recovery operations are? It's like, it's acidization of wells and other things. Look up the leases at the E. Washtenaw site, look under the deeds, and search for Paxton Resources, and you'll see what the leases people are signing look like. It is positively frightening. The DEQ, to much to my surprise, I found it is really not as interested in protecting us as we think. They have very few people monitoring thousands of wells statewide. There's tens of thousands of wells, and the number that we've gotten in terms of inspectors has been anywhere between like 15 and 25 roughly, to cover thousands and thousands of wells all over the state. And that is an amazing number to me. They're not involved in anything outside of some very technical aspects when they put the well in. No long-term monitoring, no looking for contamination in the surrounding area. No long-term monitoring, no looking for contamination in the surrounding area, just, you know, if something happens, it happens. They've been known to obscure data relative to contamination and problems, and I point that finger in the most humble possible fashion. They've deleted databases where people could look up where the contamination has occurred. They require FOIA's for the most basic of things. It's shocking, actually. And I would also like to point out that the Office of Oil, Gas, and Minerals is funded by the money collected on the oil produced. And so as far as I see it, the folks that are supposed to be protecting us and regulating this thing are being, their budget is directly controlled up or down by how much they permit. And I see that personally as a direct conflict of interest. I would also like to quote that the Hal Fitch, who's the person that oversees this at MDQ, amongst others, is that accidents do happen. I guess it's shame on us or sad for us when the accident does happen. I'd like to point out that this is not just Mitch blathering. Recently in Brooklyn, Michigan, an expert was, got up and gave a big, long talk, and I believe I sent the slides along with one of my letters recently. Dr. Grobel used to work for the Michigan DEQ and pointed out there's a plethora of contamination that has occurred, problems of the state that they do not want you to hear about, and it's a very bad scene. One example was this Hayes 22 production facility in Gaylord, where you had a groundwater contamination plume of 10 and 1/2 million cubic feet. Now, I know about you, but I'm not really signing up for the whole Gelman Science Contamination Plume somewhere near my house or here in Celine. I'm not too cool with that. And so, and the private wells that were contaminated, by the way, they estimate 20 to 30 years to clean that up. Cleanup has stalled. They have to sue to get them to restart it. So I could go on for a long time, but I, you know, obviously I'd like to respect this meeting, and I know you guys have other things to do. I'd like to point out a few things. Clearly, there's substantial hazards and downsides, fracking or not, and I'm happy to supply much more information on that. There are a lot of impacted homeowners in this area, and the problem is growing. The wells are at risk, the air is at risk, the roads are at risk, by the way, property values, much more. Celine is currently selling water to these folks so they can conduct their drilling operations, the city of Celine. I've spoken with some other folks about that, and they were incredulous about that. They could not believe that a city that draws its water from a municipal well and then creates a municipal water system from water from wells would facilitate oil drilling anywhere in the area, anywhere within 30 miles. They could not believe it because of the risk to the well itself. I'd like to say that we're being driven from our homes, and I've made my home here in Celine and Lodi. I've invested heavily in this town. You can see, just walking up the street, how we're investing and bringing jobs here. But you know, when it comes down to the health and safety of my children and those of my colleagues, I can't risk it. I can't risk my children drinking water from our well that potentially has benzene in it, or potentially has diesel fuel in it, or any of these things. I can't risk them breathing hydrogen sulfide coming off the well from a quarter block over so someone can make a little bit of cash. And, you know, I certainly can't encourage my staff to come and move to this area if this is how it's going to be. The problems, ladies and gentlemen, are going to be shouldered by us and not the oil and gas company. This is a small company. It's about an eight or 10-person company. So if something goes wrong, do you think that they have the financial resources to clean up everybody's well, to buy up everybody's property, to clean the air and filter the air? No, they don't. They just fold up shop and they move on to the next town, and that's how it rolls. And so, you know, we, the city of Celine, the township of Lodi, Celine Township, all the surrounding areas are going to be stomaching it and bearing the brunt of it, and certainly as individuals, we're bearing the brunt of it. I'd just like to call for two things here at the end of my presentation. You guys can make a difference, and that's why I'm here tonight. I, you know, I've been spending a lot of time and effort and money, honestly, a lot of money, going and looking with lawyers and everybody as how we can do this. I call on the city of Celine to stop selling water for drilling and exploration purposes, to stop facilitating this that is driving us from our homes. I also call on the city of Celine to pass ordinances that protect folks who live here, not those who have come to exploit the resources and move on. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and thank you for your attention, and I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Road?
Yes, sir.
Mitch, how many wells are currently around in Celine Township in this area? I know there's one that we understand on Brown Road, but are any planned or that you know of in Lodi Township?
Yes, sir. There's a lot of, if you notice all the little flags over on Grass Road and Dell Road, they've been doing a lot of surveying recently, and they're doing a lot of seismic testing. There is a permit application in currently for something that is just in Celine Township, just bordering on Lodi, and I'm sure there are much more to come. Certainly, there's a lot of testing going on, and as we try to collect more data, we'll find out where these things are going. My understanding is also there's one planned for over on Dell Road, though I haven't seen an application yet. I do receive the applications from the DEQ.
Yeah, and my understanding is that our water aquifer that basically feeds our city wells is in that direction coming towards us, so my concern is, we're talking about an entire water supply system for the city. So my support with what you're bringing forward is great.
I appreciate it. You know, once our aquifer is contaminated, folks, there's no undoing it. There's no uncorking it. There's no fixing it.
Any other questions? We do have a motion, you know, at the end of the agenda, so if there's no further questions at this time, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, folks.
Citizen comment on Agenda Items on the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. Mitch did a wonderful presentation. I was going to get on another article, but I remember years ago, our main concern was when the farmers had a gas tank above the ground and that could possibly leak. Gilman, of course, their aquifer is screwed up, and there's a good history on that, and we bragged about our aquifer when we did our wells. It is a wonderful aquifer, and I commend Mitch for his work and hope that the city will, in fact, when they're talking about additional water and sewer to the townships and whatever, shipping it out, that this is addressed. The other comment I'd like to make on is the Brecken, and I don't have the number, but I appreciate so much the council, the staff. Mr. Paul, I'd say your last name, but I don't know how to pronounce it. Thank you so much for the five-feet ordinance for the pedestrians and grandparents holding their grandkids' hands and everything. The one thing I was wondering if the city could do on behalf of Brecken is make a request from the U.S. Post Office to try and move that goofy mailbox there. If you can accept rejection, you can ask anything, and I'm sure that's been a problem to him, and it would be nice if we can throw that five-foot whatever and kind of utilize that. Thank you so much for the additional drawings that you have. It's very clear, and I appreciate everything you've all done. Thank you, Todd, and Police Chief, everybody, and the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comment?
Good evening. How are you doing? Paul Gergo's in from the Brecken Grill. Going forward in this resolution, before it gets signed and so forth, I was wondering if we could make a couple of additions or changes possibly to it. One of them is because of our seasons being so mild this year, it would have been great to have the opportunity to have tables out on the sidewalk prior to March 1st, which is what the agreement says right now, unless there's a city-approved event or festival or something going on. So what I'm hoping for is that when the licensing for our liquor licenses come up for approval, that that would be the renewal of an annual agreement for 12 months out of the year, so that possibly if we have Winterfest and we have snow this year instead of warm weather, we could actually have a couple of tables out on the sidewalk if people wish to sit out there and have some hot soup or something and enjoy some of the outdoor activities for that. I'm also wondering if it would be possible that there can be a clear designation of this becomes on city property or Brecken Grill's property, this is the clear designation of the cafe tables, this is the clear designation of the walkway. So I know that in certain cities, there's, whether you have yellow or white stripes or something going down the sidewalk that designates the pedestrian crossing across the street or so forth, that it would be something on our end that we're trying to move into the tree-grade area, I guess, to allow for a larger walkway, that we also don't want to have pedestrians walking through the tables and so forth of the cafe area. But I would be more than happy, when it gets to that part on the agenda, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comment?
Father Master Farhanji here. I live in Celine Water Works near Mitch. Wanted to make a comment about the Washtenaw County Road Commissioner. They had a little land in Celine Township, and Paxton needed that land in order to complete their 640 acres and start drilling, and they were willing to pay pretty good money to lease the mineral right, and Washtenaw County Commissioner refused it based on what they heard about the integrity of this company and how they do business, and also the damages that they are going to do to the area and the roads and everything, and which was very significant. Actually, I mean, it was very good to see that they cared about people rather than just taking the money. And once I heard the city of Celine has agreed to sell the water, I was kind of shocked. You say, how can they sell water? This is like a bank robber go to bank and say, can you finance my operation? Put the operation together and rob the bank. I mean, these people are going to use the water, contaminate it, and then inject it back and potentially ruin the source of the water that gave them the opportunity to do this. And if the price of the energy drops below 75 bucks a barrel, they are just going to captivate and they are going to walk, because there is a limit that they make money and it's worth to them. So I am with Mitch, asking you guys not to sell the water, because you're just going to ruin the water of this city, and people are going to start having situation. And regarding the ordinance and everything, if by any chance this exploration end up hitting some sarcrude in the area, if there is a sarcrude valve, they start pulling the oil out, what's going to happen within the radius of 10 miles? People are going to start smelling sulfur, and I don't think that people are going to like that, and especially people who are not even in the area, that they are going to get some royalty out of this. So that's something that, you know, if you guys can put some, I know the cities have some power in order to pass ordinances and everything. The counties and townships are pretty limited, and they are not planning to do much. We are trying to work with them, but hopefully you guys can make a difference here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further citizen comments? Now, we'll move on to consent agenda. Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. I already did that. The consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, through request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve is submitted.
Second.
Move, second Girba. To approve and adopt items on the consent agenda is submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Under public hearings, item 1257, this is an application for industrial facilities tax exemption, Celine Electronics. This would be a motion to acknowledge or see the application for an industrial facilities exemption certificate from Celine Electronics Incorporated in the April 3, 2012 memo from Friday's Director Burgoyne.
Move to acknowledge or see.
Motion for Marl, do we have a second?
Second.
Second Girba. Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, Celine Electronics is investing and hiring new employees. The Special Projects Commission reviewed this, and they recommended tax abatement for six-year period.
We have a motion to acknowledge or see. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. We need a motion to open a public hearing for any applicant in all taxing units and opportunity to be heard.
Move.
Second.
Move Girba. Second Tahar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
Mary Hess, and I am on the committee that was referred to as far as the commissions, and the gentleman was very descriptive on his business, and it was a great presentation, and I think it's definitely a big asset to the city, and I definitely concur for this tax exemption.
Is there any other public comment? Do you want to come and talk about what you're doing? A little free marketing. We always like to have our businesses talk about good news.
We're not drilling anything.
Yay!
Yeah. PCBs, yeah. No, it gives us great pleasure to be able to continue to expand our manufacturing company. Y'all have been great, and I mean that sincerely, in giving us the opportunity to continue to save money and retain money, retain earnings, and helping to invest in more capital equipment. We started out back in 2002 with about 20 employees. Today, we're 137. We continue to expand. We continue to invest in new technology and new equipment, and it hasn't come at a cheap price. It is expensive. There's no question about it, but at the end of the day, my solace is to be able to see the employees of Celine Electronics continue to grow, and it has done that. We occupy about 70,000 square feet of the building now. It's 110,000 square feet. One day, we hope to occupy the whole thing, but we're not at that level as of yet. So we continue to look at opportunities. We believe in technology. We continue to invest in training of our employees to understand the latest of the technologies around in our industry, and we continue to move forward. Again, we invite all of you, whoever is in the neighborhood, to be able to come in and just understand our business. It's a fascinating technology. It's one that is really high-tech. There are a lot of robotics, a lot of technical presentations on how SODA is applied, and it's an interesting application. So we invite you all, if you're in the neighborhood, just please stop by, and we'll love to show you around. Many questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Now, we need...
Move, opposed.
Move, moral. Second Girba. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. This would be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution approving application of Celine Electronics Incorporated for industrial facilities exemption certificate for our new facility for a total project cost of $676,802 for eligible machinery, equipment, furniture, fixtures for a period of six years, subject to the applicant entering into a tax abatement agreement with the city of Celine. To authorize or not authorize, the mayor and clerk to execute said tax abatement agreement as prepared and approved by the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and adopt and authorize.
Do we have a motion to approve and adopt and authorize? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Roth. I just, we've been watching your success and keep up the good work, and we're glad to see you continue to grow the company and hire more people. So congratulations and appreciate your continued investment in the community. So, thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve and adopt and authorize? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Under unfinished business, item 11197, this is EVIP reporting to Department of Treasury. This would be a motion to acknowledge or see the April 11, 2012 memo from Friday's Director Burgoyne to approve or not approve the employee compensation plan submitted for recording Part III with economic vitality incentive program to be filed with the Department of Treasury. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move Girba. Do we have a second?
Second.
Kent Rhodes.
Approve.
Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, basically, the Economic Vitality Incentive Program took the place of the constitutional part of revenue sharing and was funded at about 2/3rds... part of revenue sharing and was funded at about two-thirds of the former level. And this is the last third of that two-thirds, the last, the third part of that two-thirds funding. And basically, there are four elements that we were required to state in the employee compensation plan. There's no hard time limit on it, but you have to indicate that you intend to proceed. And they want cost-cutting measures that have to do with employee overhead costs, healthcare, retirement, that type of thing. And because of that, on Exhibit A on the back, we included what we had done so far. So we included the four items that were required, and then we also listed out what had been done so far. So we're required to have that voted by the local legislative body and then send up, send this up to Lansing by the end of the month.
Any discussion or questions for Mr. Burgoyne?
I just, you know, we just had a budget session that was, we're going through very difficult times and we have been doing cost-cutting measures. We started identifying what we've been doing in 2007, so this was something that we just started doing because Lansing said that we should be cutting costs. We have been doing that, we continue to try to find alternatives. I think you mentioned today at the work session that we cut employees from seventy-two full-time to fifty-seven, is that correct? So, you know, this is, we're not, we're not, we're not doing this because Lansing is telling us to do this. We're doing this because we have to do it because of the constraints that we have been calling the perfect storm. And we continue to have those constraints for the decrease in property values and Mr. Scamaris is gone, but we did talk during his abatement about this potential, which we'll talk about later, of eliminating personal property tax revenue. And that's twenty percent of our revenue and I have no idea how that could be accommodated. So hopefully that won't happen, but in the meantime, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but I just wanted to point out that we have been cutting costs for a long time, trying to find alternatives in different areas. So is there any other comments? So we have a motion to approve the plan as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 1260, under new business, this is a Michigan Main Street Alley project.
This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 12, 2012 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne and the April 12, 2012 letter from Saline Main Street. This motion is to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted in support of the Saline Main Street project, the Saline Historic District Alliance, in their application of a $2,000 grant from the It's About Place, Let's Save Michigan contest.
Move to approve and adopt. Second.
Move Rhodes, second Peters. Mr. Burgoyne, you wanna talk about, oh, Mr. Trapp's gonna talk about it, great. We do have some drawings on the counter tonight, too, for those of you that didn't notice that.
Art Trapp, Downtown Development Director. I'm the replacement for the replacement for the replacement for the replacement for this presentation tonight. Seems like everybody's out of town. The design team from the Main Street Group was aware of this possibility to obtain $2,000 and we were looking at a project that we could do. And one of them came up as the alleyway between, or behind Mangiamo and Brecken Grill that has typically been...
Excuse me. He's gonna have to keep talking for a minute. I'm gonna have to restart the system so I can get his document camera going. You're gonna talk for about forty-five seconds?
I will. Forty-one, forty-two. So this project is something that we thought that might make sense as a gathering... Pete and Lori. And to see if we can't make something work in this particular project. We have a drawing here. Hopefully, we'll get the chance to see it here very shortly. And it would consist of putting some kind of a gateway in front of the entryway there. Also, to have some lights, to have some kind of awnings over the doors, to put some lights over those awnings or around those doors, put in some flowers, flower boxes, to string some lights across the top. And then again, make it a place where it can be a gathering site for events, activities, and things in, you know, during the summertime or even when the weather's good, like when we had Winterfest. That was a joke, Paul. So anyway, the grant is $2,000 if you get it, and it declines from there. I think it's a thousand and then two five-hundreds. Whether or not we get any of that, it's a project that we can do. It's something that Main Street can step up and start doing something in the downtown area that kinda makes sense. It's the Saline Historic Downtown Alliance, not District Alliance, but for the minute's sake. So any questions? I mean, I do the best I can to answer them.
Yeah, Tim, how's it going?
Just to say, I think this is a great idea and hope we can do this at some other spots around town.
Yeah, it, the, we can, the budget can go anywhere depending upon, you know, what we were able to do. It can be a $25,000 project or it can be a $2,000 project. I tried to get some handle on the archway that's across the street by Max there. And Bob Rash couldn't remember exactly how much he paid for it, but was in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen thousand. And so, you know, again, it kinda depends, but it would be nice, you know, you have the picture there. We have those paper boxes, it'd be nice to get rid of some of those and kinda make the alley look attractive. Other communities have done it through the back door of their particular, and I'm thinking of Portland, Michigan, who completely revamped their back door and made it almost as attractive as the front door. So what it does is it just brings people in and keeps them there and it's nice to have both ends, so. Again, it's gonna be a project that will require contributions, not looking for anything from the city at this point in time, but again, it will be something that the Main Street crew can put together, so.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes.
Just add a couple of things. First, I wanna compliment Art Trapp for fist string backup he did pretty good. The drawing that you see here was done by Linda Klensar over the weekend with relatively little input from others because of time constraints. And so it's a general representation of the types of things that might happen back in that alley space. It's not meant to be exactly what we might end up with. But the thought is to have some kind of a archway, probably with a name on it, that would mimic or be similar to the Murphy's Crossing one on the other side of the street. And the property owners, business owners have agreed to participate in the effort to help with the cleanup and to incur some of the project costs themselves to create this, what should become a very pleasant space. There would be some wrought iron fencing down at the far end, which is not visible in this drawing because of perspectives. And a mostly abandoned large wooden flower box would be removed. So, and some mood lighting strung back and forth across the top. And I think Art covered the rest of the things. The other thing though that I wanted to mention is that the way these monies are going to be awarded is that MML has a committee which will review all of the applications and they'll pick out, I believe, the top five or ten, and then they're gonna put them up on their Facebook page and then we have to have people vote on them. So it becomes sort of a popularity thing after the, after the top ones are selected. So if we are one of the finalists, then we'll get the word out to everybody within the community. And I'm sure that Saline Patch will help with that as well as the Heritage Reporter and ask people to vote for our particular project.
One of the other things that we're trying to come up with is a unique name instead of calling it the Alley Project. So we're looking to our creative friends to come up with something. I have half a dozen names already, but I'm not gonna repeat them here, so. But if you have something creative and you wanna get back to me so I can pass it along, that would really be great.
Any questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
Even though Art said the group is not looking to the city yet, in here, Tifa has allocated $10,000, not that it necessarily all has to be spent, but it is there. And I did put that in the resolution. I thought it would strengthen the resolution to say, there's some support.
I know we've been talking about this for, doing this for a long time, so it's great to have a grant opportune. And hopefully, you know, the league, a couple of staffers, we did a walk-through, Todd and I did a walk-through of that location and they went to New York City with the, where that's public, what's it, public project space for public places? You know, the...
Skyline?
Yeah, the skyline there, there's a group out there that they were having a conference and so they brought this as a, I mean, we've been talking about it for a while, so it's good. Anyhow, it's definitely on their radar, so thank you, Art, appreciate it. So this is, the idea is this is a start and we have other locations ultimately that we can move through to also. Is there any further discussion on this motion? I'd like to compliment the Main Street Group for putting this application together and we have a motion to approve and adopt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 1261, the Brecken Grill Outdoor Cafe Tables, Use of Public Way. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of applications from Brecken Grill for the use of the public right-of-way for cafe tables, to acknowledge receipt of the April 12, 2012 memo from City Clerk Hill, and the April 10, 2012 memo from Building Inspector Taylor. To approve or not approve the sidewalk used by Brecken Grill for the cafe tables in South Ann Arbor Street and West Michigan Avenue, as shown on diagram 1.4 revised April 16, 2012, subject to approval and issuance of a permit by M.D. for the tables on West Michigan Avenue. To authorize or not authorize, the city clerk to execute the temporary license agreements as amended and further to notify M.D. that the city of Saline is in support of these sidewalk cafes and that the city of Saline accepts responsibility of enforcement.
Move to approve, authorize? An authorize, is that right?
Just authorize.
Just authorize, just one, excuse me. As submitted, yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Marl. As amended.
I really butchered that one.
We need a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tahar. Okay. Our clerk is gonna just go through these two because there's some changes based on...
Right, we have a change on the West Michigan Avenue Temporary License Agreement, also. Number one, it should be diagram 1.4 revised, 416, 2012. To coincide with the new diagram that was passed out tonight because that covers both South Ann Arbor Street and West Michigan Avenue. And item number four, the end of the first sentence, third line where it says, "At least sixty inches at all times," we need to insert, "And shall be depicted by taped line on the right-of-way." And I think that covers the changes that were brought forth today when Mr. Campbell and Police Chief Lindman met on-site with Mr. Gargosian to change these documents. And if there's anything else, then we can certainly make those additions.
Okay, so that was the amendment. And then there was some discussion from, we have a motion on the floor, there was some discussion from the applicant regarding the term of this agreement. We probably need to have some discussion on that. Is there any comments from council regarding extending this agreement for a longer period of time or not having it valid for a period of time, meaning to the reverse way? Mr. Rhodes, did you have a comment?
I was going to speak in favor of the request from Mr. Gargosian to extend the time period during which these sidewalk cafes can be in place. I think that, and it would apply, of course, to all of those that we have issued out there in my opinion, so they're all treated the same. I think that each of these business owners is a responsible enough individual, a student enough to know when they can or cannot put out tables and chairs for the use of our, of our residents. And I believe that they were also responsible enough to know that if they do have tables and chairs out and there's snow around there, that they're gonna get the snow and the ice cleared away from that area. Otherwise, who's gonna come sit at their places? So I'm in favor of making it an annual authorization.
Okay, I was just talking to the clerk regarding, you know, there is a renewal of a liquor license and we would tie this to that, so we probably need to change...
It would be the only one affected.
It would be the only one affected to that?
Liquor license.
Okay, somehow we need to tie that to this thirteenth number, the term of the agreement, right?
Well, the term of the agreement is usually from the date that they get approval. So if he would apply in February of each year, and there are no changes, then it would run February to February. It's gonna run for a one-year term. And if it's changed the way Mr. Rhodes states, it's gonna be for a one-year term with no...
From April, right?
Sure, but it would be April to April. It is gonna change, he's gonna be able to have his tables out.
Okay.
And I would just renew it upon their application. They would all come do it the same time, instead of one coming now and one coming later.
Okay. Sorry, we just...
Are we okay with that?
I was just trying to find out about the liquor license renewal.
Can I speak to the issue of period of time when cafe tables can be placed outdoors? I agree with my colleague, Mr. Rhodes, and as the mover of this motion, I support that concept. In fact, I think two, three years ago when we liberalized and expanded, excuse me, the period of time in which restaurants and cafes could have tables and accommodations available for patrons outside, I think I was the mover of that motion. But I certainly concur with the assessment that Mr. Rhodes articulated and I think it would be good for the businesses. And additionally, I think the courtesy should be extended to all of our businesses and entities that apply for cafe seating, not just Brecken Grill. But I think his language would be perfect just to allow facilities and entities to have cafe tables on annually.
Mr. Tahar, would you be willing to adjust?
Yes.
So this would be an amendment, item nine on both of the agreements.
No, it's not the same on both.
It's not the number?
No.
Oh, okay.
West Michigan Avenue, it is number eight.
Okay, number nine on the South Ann Arbor Street one, just removing the sentence, they shall be removed from December 1st to March 1st. And then what number is it? It's on number eight on the West Michigan Avenue one. So there's one sentence in that paragraph about the tables and chairs on both agreements, the middle sentence. We'll continue discussion on Mr. Peters and Mr. Girba. You had...
Yeah, just, I just wanna say, I think this is a pretty good solution to an issue that's been kicked around for quite a while. I don't know how difficult it is to move a mailbox, is that difficult? That would be a big plus if we could get that mailbox out of the way, perhaps around the corner where people park and they can have more access to it. And also on the sketch, I don't know how important it is, the big electrical box that sits on the corner that works the street, the lights there, that maybe, we may need to add that to the sketch. And that we've got one table in that spot. I don't know if that's gonna fit there or not because of that large box that sits out there. I know this is kinda diagrammatical and probably once you set up a breakdown a few times, we'll get a better idea of how you want your tables arranged, but just the engineer in me says we need to add to the electrical box of this.
I think Mr. Campbell has a comment to that.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, at least as we see it, I mean, we believe the electric box is there, it's just not in the exact right place, that little rectangular brownish box next to the southerly, that's a light pole?
Scale, yeah.
Right. And it doesn't have to be to scale, so this is, you know, but, but, you know, as... And it doesn't have to be the scale, so this is, you know, but, you know, as Clerk Hill mentioned before, Police Chief Lindman and I went up there, and actually, Building Inspector Taylor and I have been up there a couple of times as well. And there is plenty of room for a four-person table right there between the, the one pole to the north is a strain pole for the streetlights, and then there's the electric box, if you will. And then you see the table to the south of that, that says two chairs. That is very small, but as you can say, as you can see, it is limited, going to be limited to two chairs.
Yeah.
As opposed to four.
Well, I think this is a great look for Celine. I always like to drive by and see the folks sitting there enjoying themselves, it's very nice.
Mr. Girba.
Only question I had maybe for Mr. Fordice, the only concern being when you plow snow and such during the winter, and the tables are as such out there, I just want to make sure that we, if we should by chance put a whole bunch of snow on top of it, we won't be held responsible for the damaged tables. That would be the only concern I would have, because it's going to happen.
Yeah, that definitely will happen, especially with the new location, curbside. My impression of taking this to an annual basis is that the tables and chairs would be brought in and out as the weather permits. I'm not sure if that's written into the agreement, but, you know, that might be a simple clause that, you know, during winter months, the proprietor is responsible for getting the chairs out of the way for snow clearing operations, or assumes the risk, or something like that.
I mean, that's more my concern, just from that assumption, because you don't know, it, snow can not be on one day, and knowing Michigan is going to snow by 2:00 the next day. So, when that type of situation, so I would like to kind, some kind of adjustment.
Just say on item eight, the tables and chairs here in authorized shall be removed during high winds and all storm events to ensure that other property is not damaged. So that should suffice, I think, that was the general...
Usually it was a snowstorm, you're nuts.
I mean, the applicant's welcome to come up and make a comment. I would not expect that he would not want to have his furniture out in bad weather because it will erode it.
Yeah, the intention is not to have the tables out there 365 days a year, and set them up only when it's nice weather, and when it's not nice weather, having leaves and snow and trash get caught in it or whatever. Part of what Mr. Campbell and I talked about today was during the months that it is operational and, you know, the weather is nice and so forth, it's us maintaining the tree grates and everything there, actually, not weeds and trash and stuff there. And then, in the, in the months that it does get colder, and we do expect snow, you know, obviously in November, it's a surprise snow, or in April, it might be a surprise snow, but it would be having the opportunity that if we're going to have a nice six-degree week in the middle of January, being able to have a couple of my guys haul, not maybe all the tables out, but some of the tables out, so that there would be an opportunity for people to sit outside. It would be that opportunity for us if we, if we're going in that direction to, you know, in the future, look at those stand-up heaters, or some type of, you know, modification or ambiance enhancements to that area. But at this point right now, is to take the tables inside when the weather, you know, starts getting bad.
No, that's fine, I just didn't want to have them out there all year round when knowing potentially they could be damaged or destroyed.
My intention, and I have since I am in, responsible for the clearing of the snow on that sidewalk, is I do the best of my ability to take it all the way to the curb in the, in the event of a big snow anyway, so when the plows come by, I do take it with them. So that majority of my sidewalk is cleaned and generalized, it is, and there's not a drift there anyway, so make it easier for us. Thanks. While I'm up here, I do have one question.
I don't know.
If we do approve, if we do approve all this this evening, which I'm hopeful that you do, with some of the discussion that we had about tree grates and removal of benches and so forth, I just also am interested in a timely fashion of getting that done so that we can start, you know, allowing some of our guests to enjoy the weather. Thanks.
Just pointed out by the clerk that actually, not only that second sentence, but the third sentence, if there is a community event during this period, the tables and chairs may be utilized for the duration of the event only, that can also be deleted because they're being utilized all year, right? So that would be paragraph eight on the West Michigan one, and paragraph nine on the Southian Arbor one. So, does everybody follow that deletion?
Yes.
And one other thing, we realized that the chief was out today and has a memo in a packet that was on the bench, and I did not add that to the motion. So if you could also add, if the mover, Mr. Moore and Ms. Tihar would be willing to add also to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Police Chief Lindman dated April 16, 2012, to your motion?
Yes, certainly.
Absolutely.
Is there any other discussion on this? Mr. Rhodes.
And I had one other comment, and that is the delineation of the public right-of-way for the walkway. And I see the staff has recommended that that line is taped as opposed to paint. I have a concern with that, because I could almost guarantee that at some point in time that tape is going to come loose from the bricks or the cement, and then we have a potential trip hazard. I'd much rather see some kind of painted surface, maybe not a continuous line, maybe it's a dash line or something, but I, I worry about the tape.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, I certainly agree that the paint would be much easier, but our concern is we don't want to paint the brick. So I mean, it's the decorative brick, so that was, that was our concern.
I would say this is incumbent on the applicant to make sure that we don't have a trip hazard there. Would you be willing to take that?
We could actually paint the cement portions and not paint, if you're going to do a dashed area, and not paint the brick, there's only two brick areas that might be 4 feet length, and then the rest of the area is cement. I mean, definitely with, if we're doing 12 months out of the year, I mean, I don't want to spend all my time replacing paint out there, but, whatever.
Of course I do.
I do think the same with these, you know, if you did paint in a brighter color of yellow or orange, more barrier out of your, where you can be and where you can't be.
I guess, I would like to have staff and applicant, I would recommend that they work that out and just change it from taped to marked line. Just make sure that there is a mark that stays there that delineates where the walkway is and where the serving area is. And this, it would be your responsibility to make sure that is kept up. But I think it would be best if they worked out what would be...
And I'm fine with that, I just wanted to remove that requirement that it has to be taken.
Okay, so we're going to change another part of this agreement to paragraph three on Southian Arbor Street and paragraph... I don't see it. Oh, we added it, right? Paragraph four on the West Michigan would be a marked line, we added that, okay. Is there any other additions or changes to this motion? We know what we're moving on?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, authorize, and authorize as amended. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1262, Participation in Collaborative Sign Purchasing Plan, this is a motion acknowledged receipt of the April 12, 2012 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, to authorize or not authorize participation in the collaborative sign purchasing plan for the Washington County Railroad Commission, and to approve or not approve the purchase of street signs for fiscal year 2012 in the amount not to exceed $8,500.
Move to authorize and approve.
Second.
Move, Rhodes, second, Tihar. Go ahead, to authorize. Mr. Fordice.
Yeah, the, there have been some rule changes in how we're required to manage our street signs, and most of those rules are kicking in full force this year. We have to have a program in place to maintain a minimum level of retroreflactivity so that our, our street signs are visible at night. So this is the, we've been kind of gearing up for it over the past couple of years, making some plans, getting a management system in place, and this is the year that we actually have to start replacing signs. And then we have, I believe it's four years to get everything up to code, and then an ongoing continuing management program to maintain that level. So this year, when all the, all the road agencies in the area and in the nation are faced with this, and the Village of Manchester came up with the idea of everybody grouping together to buy signs in bulk, so the road commission kind of took that, they're the largest road agency in the area, obviously, and have the, already have large purchasing volume. And they brought in Chelsea, Dexter, Manchester, and Celine, and we joined in on their bid, very similar to the way Celine currently does pavement markings. So that has allowed us to get that bulk discount. I compared the bid prices that came in this month to our most recent signed purchases, and they're 15, 16% lower than what we've been paying. And I think it's going to be, it's a very beneficial arrangement for us. Not only does it save us on the cost of the signs, but it also saved us a fair amount of administrative time. I didn't have to put together a bid document, I simply needed to do a quantity estimate and tack it on to the county's program, so it's, it was a very efficient operation. And I would recommend we go with the plan.
Any questions? Thanks for your work. We have a motion to authorize and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1263, the available quota liquor license, this is a motion acknowledged receipt of the April 12, 2012 memo from City Clerk Hill, to direct the city clerk to initiate the process in accordance with section 6.20 of the Celine City Code for consideration of issuance of the available license.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Move, Girba, second, Moore. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant request, item 1264, this would be a motion acknowledged receipt of the April 12, 2012 memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs, to authorize or not authorize staff to make application to carriers for a grant in the amount of $1,200 for locker room enhancements and play equipment for kids camp and team programs. You have a motion?
Move to authorize.
Rhodes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Tihar. Authorize? Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1265, sale of water that facilitates oil and gas drilling in area, we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 10, 2012 letter and supporting documents from Mitch Rhodes.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second, Tihar. Discussion? Mr. Girba.
I am concerned that we're kind of supporting this drilling that's going on. From my perspective, I think we do have a concern out there that if this isn't regulated properly, and if we can, we can't wait until the state decides to come around, because I don't think they're going to, I think this is basically something that's been let out, and at this point, we don't need to encourage it, but we really can't stop it from outside our own borders, but we can look into reducing the potential impact that we have on allowing this to continue. I think there's other ways that we could look at, considering how we sell our water, or who to manage, basically just within our own projects or such, instead of basic, going outside and allowing this continued drilling. Because Paxton isn't the only company, we had one prior two years ago, I believe, Allegrin or something like that, that also had purchased a large quantity of water, and their background was oil and gas drilling too. So I think if we're looking at being proactive in trying to prevent this, I think we need to look at trying to help discourage the action.
So, Mr. Campbell, you had did a spreadsheet on what we sold the last two years, two fiscal years? Want to speak to that?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. About the last year and a half, it's fiscal year 11 and fiscal year 12. As you can see, fiscal year 11, we sold 3,500 gallons to Jackson Associates Incorporated, and 163,000 gallons to Atterbury Consulting. And then thus far, as of a few weeks ago, we'd sold, let's see, back in December of 2011, we sold 64,800 gallons to Paxton Resources. October of 2011, we sold 5,600 gallons to Shoncheck Incorporated. Back in August of 11, we sold 75 gallons to Sun and Shade Leveling. And then again, in August of 11, we sold 207,000 gallons to Paxton Resources. So the city's had a policy for several years to sell water to contractors doing projects. So that's what we've been continuing to do.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I just have one comment. And I wonder if we're not addressing the wrong issue here tonight. The problem won't go away if Celine doesn't sell that water, they'll just get water from somebody else. What you really need is reform within the, the gas industry. And I'm not so sure if Celine needs to be made partner to some of those practices. That's really what we need is reform, or better practice by the gas extraction and the old people. So if we don't sell the water, your problem doesn't go away.
Well, I, I agree with Mr. Girba, and I think for the amount of money that, it's $1,800 actually, that we have sold worth to Paxton, and I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Peters, but seems to me, I did a little bit of homework on my own, and my understanding is there's about 7,000 wells around the state, and think this does, could potentially affect our aquifer, and I do think we need to try to figure out other alternatives besides this, but, and I do think they will go somewhere else. But I would be in favor of not selling, you know, water outside, that would be used outside the city limits, and I think that would take care of this problem, because they're certainly not going to be drilling in the city. So, I, I, you know, my understanding, the research I've done so far, which isn't a lot, and I talked about what I learned from the councilman from Arlington, there are a lot of issues, I've talked to the chief about it a little bit, we haven't spent a ton of time yet on it, but because it is currently in the fire district, that is an issue that we need to be aware of and work through, and I think he's been talking to some other fire people too. But the, there isn't really any ability to regulate the drilling as far as local control. And I guess the one thing that my understanding is there is a bill out there that will be regulating what they put, or monitoring, they have to, it would require reporting of what kind of chemicals they put in the water that they would be drilling. That's the only thing that I've been able to find out that is anywhere close to being moving anywhere. So, you haven't even heard that?
Well, my boss is, is the chief sponsor of one of three bills that would regulate essentially fracking in the state of Michigan. And they are good pieces of legislation and would do a whole lot to combat the problem. But in this particular session of the legislature, they are going nowhere fast.
Right, but he told me there was one, and it wasn't his bill, that was, would be, he thought might go, which is just to be able to monitor where the chemicals are?
There might be, there's an Irwin bill, there's a Brown bill, and then there's a Meadows.
It's Brown's bill, he said he thought might be able to move. And basically, all it does is report what chemicals are going in with the water, so that maybe there would be some kind of, but as far as local zoning or limiting where you could drill, that's not, that's not even on the table at this point. But I, you know, I, it's not, this isn't, I don't think this is that difficult decision personally, so I would support Mr. Girba in trying to look at, you know, not selling outside the city limits, and that would take care of, you know, that problem. So, Mr. Rhodes, I know you had your hand raised.
I just wanted to clarify what you had said or intended, that your suggestion was to ban all sales of water for use outside of the city limits?
Right. So, that would just, that's these people that you reported right here, right?
These are the folks that we've sold to. And as we've talked before, we can't discriminate against legal uses. And currently, right, wrong, and different, it is a legal use, so we can't, as I talked to Mr. Rhodes before, that we can't discriminate and say, well, allegedly, because alleged negative impact you may or may not have, we can't sell water. However, as we also spoken, if we did want to limit it and say, we're only going to sell, I mean, one, we could just eliminate any water sales, wholesale water sales, or we could say something such as the mayor proposed of limiting it to only, selling it to only contractors that are doing projects within the corporate limits of Celine, so the City of Celine.
Okay, so right now we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the letter and supporting documents. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor to acknowledge receipt on supporting documents, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I didn't really get a sense from this council if they were supportive of the... Mr. Tihar?
Yes, I would support limiting sale, wholesale sales... Yes, I would support limiting sale, wholesale sales of water to uses within the corporate limits of the city. Yes, I am.
Okay. Did you get that? And Mr. Girba, do you?
I'll support it.
Does everybody understand what the motion is?
I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear it either.
The motion is to limit sale, wholesale sale of water to entities that are doing business in the city only. Mr. Roth.
For clarification, who made the motion? Who seconded that motion?
Mr. Terhar made the motion, Mr. Girba seconded.
And I will support that motion.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes.
I support the concept, but I wonder if we need to clarify that a little bit, because a business, a company could be doing business in the city but buying water to do something outside, so it's really for use in the city, right?
Okay. Utilizing water.
That was, my intention was for projects to be carried out within the city limits.
Okay. Is that sufficient?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have that? Okay.
Now, I'd like to have that clarified even more. What's it going to say far as which contractor? Can I get seats for somebody hauling water hired by some farmer having a cistern, needing water, and contract with somebody to come into the city and purchase the water for their farm purposes?
Well, we're, that's, that would not be, this is only for projects that were being, the water would be used for projects within the city limits. And we have a report right here of the wholesale water sales from the last two years, and there isn't anybody that would be like that, so. But that, that's the motion on the floor, that's why we're having discussion on it. So, do you want to read it back for all council?
Sure. Move, Terhar, second, Girba, to limit the wholesale sale of water to entities doing projects in the city only.
Further discussion on the motion?
Is that legal?
Is that legal, Mr. Grossman? It's our water.
I think it is. I really should do some research before I give you a definite yes or no. I have to see what the state law says. There is, there are state statutes on water law, and they need to be reviewed before we, before we pass a resolution, which might disagree with that. There are also, as mentioned in the report, some action that can be taken in zoning. You said it's a, it's a legal use. I'm not so sure it is a legal use. I don't know of anything in our zoning ordinance that permits it, but we could pass a zoning ordinance, or we could make this a part of a zoning ordinance, which would, we have the authority to regulate land uses in the city, and just as we did with marijuana. And we said that there, that we would, no land in the city of Sleen shall be used for any purpose which is contrary to federal, state, or local law. You could do something like that, but, but, but I wouldn't want to try to do it tonight, is what I'm saying. I'd want to look at state law, state statute, and there's, I can't remember the name of the case, but in your report, there's a, there's a case, it's not in Michigan, I don't think, it's a...
The New York cases, or?
Yeah.
It was a town, it was like Dryden versus Anshel.
Dryden, the Dryden case, yeah. And I think that we need to look at something like that for a more comprehensive answer or response to this problem. Although certainly temporarily, until we can get something done, which deals with it more, more fully, these are certainly good temporary measures.
Well, I would think we can limit, we can just not sell wholesale water for the, for the time being until we do further.
We can put a ban on it if we want.
You know, I...
I thought we were getting holdings.
Okay. Well, that's what we did, so.
Could we put it on hold till our next council meeting to give Attorney Grossman time to come back to us with a recommendation?
That sounds like a good idea.
Sure.
It's like, you know, I apologize, but, you know, I just want to say, I appreciate the, I appreciate the, you know, the care with which this is being considered. Certainly, we wouldn't want to do anything that would be illegal or put the city in a bad position, but, you know, my home doesn't have time to wait. Our homes don't have time to wait, and these folks are moving as fast as they can, week by week, essentially operating in the cover of dark at the DEQ, where the hearings are held, no one knows where the hearings are held, no one knows when the hearings are held, et cetera, et cetera. And so, this stuff is going on, and it's very, very close. It's going on across from people's backyards, it's going on in people's backyards. And so, you know, I would ask, if anything, if there's delay in considering it, that there would be temporary suspension of sales of water to these operations, at least until the facts come out, at least until folks have an ability, or the council has an ability to look into what's going on. And to Commissioner Peters' comment, Councilman Peters' comment, I agree that we will not stop anything by cutting off the water supply, but certainly, we don't have to encourage what's going on, we don't have to facilitate what's going on, and if nothing else, this may potentially slow down what's going on until we can get proper legislation in place to, to protect our homes, protect our wells. There's not a lot of interest in Lansing at this current time, as Mr. Marilla commented, in fixing the situation, and it's a sad fact. And so, you know, while every day ticks by, our, our homes are very much in jeopardy. And so, I would ask humbly that, that folks consider that delays may, may be a very negative thing here in this area. So, thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Madam Mayor, thank you. As we talk about a delay, or we could put, just like we did when we, when the council was deliberating about the medical marijuana, we could put a moratorium.
Right. So, if you want to change your motion, instead of outright ban, it's a moratorium on...
A temporary, a moratorium on waters, any wholesale water sales? Yes.
This is all, this is all we had for the last two years, correct?
A year and a half, approximately, yes.
So, we're not expecting, okay.
Well, I would, I would suggest it be on all, I mean, whether it's inside or outside.
Right. Just a general warranty. Yes.
Okay. Okay, you want to read it? And Mr. Girba, would you second that?
Oh, totally, yes.
Okay.
Move, Terhar, second of Girba, to place a moratorium on the wholesale sale of water.
Is there further discussion on this motion? Mr. Girba.
I just want to make a concern. My whole approach on this is looking at, from the Gelman approach, that we know what kind of contamination happened there, we know what kind of contamination that we've had from our own gas stations, where water can, where oil and gas can seep through the soil and get into the water. We've got more issues beyond just the wells. We've got the pipeline that runs north of town, which has been in there over forty to fifty years and has not been inspected, that I know of, and I'm not sure what it is. We look at Kalamazoo River, where we had, has such a huge issue back in 2010, and just today, they announced that they were doing some opening areas, but they're still cleaning that mess up. At some point, yes, we are dependent on oil and such, but we have to look at what we're really going to have of doing in the future. Oil exploration cannot necessarily happen right in the area where we're living and basically trying to survive. All of a sudden, if we had to make up this difference of trying to replace the water supply to our city, we're looking at having to tag into Detroit Water Supply or something like that, and the cost of that is just unbearable. It's the unseen cost on all of this activity is going to make us end up paying for it one way or the another, just so that we avoid another 15 cents increase on oil for maybe another 25 years or something. But even that's just a subject, subjective approach on it. I just think this is one of the things that we make public knowledge about what's going on, because from my own perspective, I didn't know how much was going on in Lenawee County and in that area until just the last two months, when the Free Press came out with an article on it, and it was surprising at what's going forth, but it is, it's what's happening with our legislature right now, and they're pushing forward on everything, and, you know, we can't do this, we've got to look forward to what's happening in the future, not just what's happening in the next two or three years.
Well, our state representative's having a town hall on Wednesday at Six Paimon Liberty about this, so I think you're going to be there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, for anybody that wants to get more information than what we have here, and I have some notes too, but I forgot to bring them, because I was thinking on the work session and... Mr. Campbell.
You, Madam Mayor, just as also a point of interest too, we've also invited geologists from DEQ to come and talk at the next regular meeting on fracking as well, so sort of obviously everybody's invited, and, but just wanted to, and then also, that'd be appropriate time to ask some of the questions as well.
Great. Mr. Gross.
One of the things that was impressive in the report that we received, in the written report tonight, was that 20% of the natural gas that's used in Michigan, it comes from Michigan fracking of wells. Now, that's a lot of gas.
They had a session up at Lansing Conference on this subject also. I think, for you, I went to part of it. Were you at that, Mr. Campbell? I have some notes on that, so, okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion, and we have any commissioner committee reports from council members? Mr. Marle.
Just a real quick announcement that the Cemetery Task Force meeting, or Committee, excuse me, is meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, April 17th at 6:30. So, a reminder to my two colleagues who serve on that task force, and then I recall at our last meeting, many of my other council colleagues attended and participated and shared valuable insight and perspective. So, if you are inclined to do that again, we would welcome you tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM in the conference room. And the public is, is welcome and invited to attend as well. Thank you.
Any other commissioner committee, Mr. Rhodes?
Environmental Commission meets this coming Wednesday at 6 o'clock at the library, one hour earlier than normal, in order to also attend a 7 o'clock program at the library called Green My House. Public is invited to that, of course. And then on Saturday, the 21st, outside Farmers Market at Liberty School from 9 to 12, Environmental Commission will be handing out white pine and red osier dogwood seedlings. And finally, on April 28th, will be the next environmental cosponsor e-waste event, recycling event, from 9 to 4, take place at 211 Willis Street, the fifth corner. Thank you.
Mr. Har.
The arts, thank you, the Arts and Culture Committee met last Wednesday. We're continuing to work on the Sculpture Walk project and continuing polling representatives from the local arts and culture community. Pulling, we're, the plan is to pull those comments together and analyze them, report to city council, possibly make recommendations, depending on what, and what kind of things we've learned. And then finally, we have recently learned of Girl Scout, who has, who is working on a proposal for a public art project that we are interested in, and we hope council will be hearing more about that at its next meeting. Thank you.
I know the DIA has a community art program. We need to talk. In and out, something in and out. Okay. Are there other commissioner committee reports?
DIA has already assigned all those communities for this next year.
Oh, they have?
And they're, they're mostly downriver, trying to do it within easy walking reference for next year. But the reason I know that is Leslie Flyburn has looked into it, and she hopes to do something the year after with that.
Oh, good. Okay. Is there any other commissioner committee reports? Are there reports or other announcements? Update on police chief search. Mr. Campbell.
Madam Mayor, the hiring committee met, let me back up. End of March was the deadline for applications for police chief. We received 44, and again, working with Terry McGinn of Career Directions, the hiring committee met last Friday to go through the first evaluation, if you will, and narrow it down. We narrowed it down to 16. Mr. McGinn will be conducting telephone interviews with those 16, and coming back first in early May with the hiring committee to discuss the results of those telephone interviews, and with the hopes of, again, narrowing it down to the six or eight that we will invite back for, for interviews or oral boards. And at that point, then we would go public with those names. Until then, we will not. And then the other twist to this is that you may, all may recall that I came before you and said, I firmly, I prefer, I didn't say not ever, but prefer that the interim chief not submit, not be considered. And I can tell you that Mr. Lindman told me, in the presence of the mayor and I, when we did the face-to-face interviews for the interim, and he said, if you don't want me to, I promise you now, I will not. And he has not. Well, I know some of you, as I have, have heard very good things about Chief Lindman from people in the department, from people in the community. And I've also heard that he loves this, this community now, and he has a lot of interest. However, because of what he told me, and he is a man of utmost integrity, he wasn't going to pursue wanting to throw his hat in the ring because of what he promised. So, when that little bird told me, told me that, I went and talked to him and said, is this what you're thinking? Is this what you want to consider? And he said he would, but again, he wasn't, because of what he promised, he would not. So, I said, well, let me take it to the hiring committee and discuss with them, and it was unanimous to allow him into the search. There's no guarantees, there's no promises. He's made it to the, and he qualified, he'd get the same points as everybody else, and he was right in the, in the thick, the thick of it, and so, we will, he's added to the list of 16 that will have, participate in the telephone interviews. Now, will he get past that? Don't know, maybe, maybe not. So, we'll just wait and see. But I will tell you, he has done a very good job, and, but again, he's in the process, and that's, 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 the only guarantee that he has right now is that he's in the process. So, I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, and be, again, be above board. And I still, I mean, I still prefer that, that, in a perfect world, but again, as I said then, and I say now, I didn't say never, because as I may recall, I said there, things, stranger things happen, and this is one of those things. But he has been doing a tremendous job, so we'll just wait and see where it goes from here.
Any questions? And you want to talk about our trip to Lansing?
Yes. We talked a little bit, last week's special meeting, that we started talking about the budget. The Replaced on a Race Coalition is having this Wednesday, the 18th, at 10:30, a press conference at one of the firehouses in Lansing. I know at a minimum that Mr. Roth and I are going, and then after the, after the press conference, there, the, because also on the 18th is going to kick off of the, the hearings that the Senate Committee is going to be conducting, and so, they want to, would like us to go and show support in force, if you will. And my understanding is, when I talked to MML last week, is that this first week, the committee already has the people they want invited to testify, and my understanding is also that they've told MML that they, they will be testifying next week. That was as of early last week, so, so I don't know when the rest of the folks will be able to testify, but in the, in the near future, so. But, so we're going, if anybody would like to go, I'd like to leave here 9 o'clock or so, so we can get up there in a timely fashion. So, just let me know.
Many people can go, it's good. Had other times we had to go to Lansing to raise a racket. This would be a really important time.
The more the mayor.
We talked about it a lot, that this is going to be a big one with our budget, and I think that's just an opportunity to really stand up and be counted, so I hope everybody, as many people as possible could come. It'd be great. I'm planning on going. Even though we have Watts, I was trying to get all the Watts people to go, instead of having a Watts meeting, but...
Okay, so we'll have to talk about whether I'm going to skip Watts to go to Lansing. Okay.
Okay. Any discussions? Brian, you're already up there?
Actually, unfortunately, I'll not be there that day, because I have the Senior Center General Membership meeting in Monsha.
Okay.
But you have my moral support.
We need your body. I need your body. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other announcements? Under public comment, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come for at this time, make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested when not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary has 600 Canterbury. I was, there was a couple of things. In 2004, I think the renewal permit for all the sidewalk cafes were $25. Now, my water rates went up and everything has went up and the stage has went up for using. And I was wondering if that could be reevaluated for all sidewalk cafes. $25 renewal is not really that much. And the other thing is with the Christmas, or the sidewalks, I guess my question is, are the sidewalks uptown maintained by the adjacent property owners? Or are they maintained by the DPW? If they were maintained by the DPW, it would have been nice for the council to address the DPW superintendent on the Christmas winter, taking care. Now, my sidewalk, I'm 73 and I'm getting crippled up, but I clean my sidewalks, my snow. And I think that it bothers me if we're talking about chairs and tables and snow and who cleans that off? Because it is the city sidewalk. And I really would like to have the question of whose responsibility is to clean the sidewalks of the adjacent property owners uptown.
Thank you. Can I get an answer? Sure. Mr. Campbell.
Sir, it's the property owner.
Thank you.
Is there others who didn't come in? Not. Our next meeting is next Monday at 6:00 PM for Budget Work Meeting. And then following, May 7th is a regular meeting. Well, work meeting first and then the regular meeting. We have a motion to adjourn at 9:30.
So, move.
Move, Marlowe. Do you have a second?
Second.
Sir, no, sorry, I apologize. I meant to just mention, just a quick reminder about the joint meeting on Thursday with the City Council, the School Board, the Library Board, DMA, Celine Main Street. I think that's the five of us, I believe. Oh, and Chamber, the Chamber. So.
Okay. The motion by Marlowe, do we have a second?
Second.
By Tare. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.